So I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Columbia Board of Selectmen order on Tuesday, November twenty first in year two thousand twenty three. Uh, this is the hybrid meeting, public can attend in person or electronically. Uh, if you want to put something in, you could do that in the town of Columbia. Public input on Columbia dot org or Columbia C T dot org um website. Conducting a hybrid virtual meeting, whether you're here or you're online, if you're online, please raise your hand if you have a something to ask or an audience citizen. Or if you feel your subject matter expert on an item that we're discussing, you need to be called upon. Um, please state your name and your address if you are called upon. And we are going to be respectful between everybody who is included in the meeting this evening, otherwise you will not be allowed to remain. Okay, understanding that, our next order of business, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll have to add it in the agenda. Uh, I moved to amend the agenda and add sixteen point one executive. Legals under executive session, we have some stuff came in from our attorney on an item that we've been working on, I would like to move forward with that, so. I moved to amend the agenda and add sixteen point one legal under executive, executive session and that's along with the agenda that is presented. Any discussions? All those in favor? Close, okay. Any approval of the minutes? I moved through the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes for November twelfth, two thousand twenty three. Any discussion? All those in favor? So audience, a citizen for anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Anybody in the chat? Seeing no hands? And move on, thank you, full business, Lake Management Advisory Commission proposed updates to the Lake Town ordinances. All right. A lot of discussion on this, huh? Move back and forth and stuff, so I'm looking at some of these things, Mark, you wanna? Um, we had some questions.
Yes, so if you go right behind the table, this is, there you go, those are the questions and the answers that we got from.
All right, so questions, we're gonna go through these questions one by one, is that it?
Sure.
So the grandfather clause in section H dash one nine zero five echo about the grandfather clause, so. So it to to me, it says, what we're gonna say, I can confirm, uh, no problem reasonably constructed grandfather clause. So anybody who's been on the water with whatever they've been using so far, if it wasn't covered in the ordinance, the grandfathering it in forever?
The. There's a blank in the draft, Henry Beck, uh, a member of uh, L M A C, forty one D B H, also a member of Allen, Sage County. There was a blank to put in a a number of years, it is all right to have an ordinance, something that makes it uh. Applicable uh immediately, uh but then uh accepts uh certain circumstances that have existed for a period of time. And allow them to continue for some reasonable period of time. Uh, the reason to do this is to uh guard against the concept of unjust taking of somebody's property uh by a government. Uh, because of the fact that suddenly they go from being able to use their property to not being able to use their property. And the uh concept is what's a reasonable period of time? It is possible to grandfather it for as long as the current owner owns the boat. The language that's in the ordinance is drafted suggests that as long uh that if a person no longer owns the boat, short of whatever years put in the blank. Um, then uh it's no longer grandfathered. Uh, the concept is if it's the same owner and they keep it on Columbia Lake, we could say a reasonable period of time for a motorboat is. Uh, survived his X years, we can do research to come up with suggestions for that, we can say six or eight or whatever. Uh, we could also determine, or the board of selectmen could determine that if for as long as a particular owner wants to own the boat and maintain the best. Uh, appeal, the concept is that they can continue to have and operate it for some period of time. But when they dispose of it, they're not being deprived of their property because they can sell it to someone else who will use it. Uh, at a different body of water, and it it's not taking any economic value uh away from them. Once they decide they don't want to leave it here, all we're preventing here is that they can't turn around and sell it to their neighbor and have it continue to grandfather. They'd have to sell it to somebody else for use in another.
Okay, the other thing I'd like to point out, and this is one oh, no, excuse me, H. One nine zero dash six echo, we didn't correct it, it's a six echo. So. All right, so we're not telling them, anybody, that they have to get uh their boat, whatever it is. Let me ask a question, what if we find a boat that has an oversized engine? But it's been, it's on the lake. In a uh. Less than ethical. Have a.
I I can speak to that, the the way they um. Uh, ordinance is worded, it the only thing that is grandfathered is something that's changed. Uh, in the uh current or the the new ordinance, if it was illegal with the ordinance that's in place today. Right, at this moment, it remains illegal and would have to be removed from uh the lake because it is on by some kind of. Of uh error or misrepresentation or uh what have you, and and so it would. Would would not be qualified to be on the lake, and so therefore it's not grandfathered.
Okay, so in you saying that, I'd like to amend my comment to set, not to to that I think anybody would do it, but let's say because of error, thank you so much, Henry, that's good. So sunset clause, that means. Okay, so we'll have to decide on that, whether it's the life of the boat, if they keep it in pristine condition, I know there. You know, uh, Mary and Buck, you guys have a great boat, a beautiful boat. If it was too long, but you keep it in pristine, why wouldn't you want it to have it on the lake as long as the boat is, so? So you you're asking us to set years, but. Okay, so. Bill O'Brien asked a question about the language about penalty listing in the three sections. And about our enforcement of that, and the answer, the suggested answer is. That any reference to the Board of Selectmen related to penalties should be changed to first select. First selectman position is considered the police chief position, elected as Mark always likes to tell me. And they should be involved in the penalty decisions. Well, I don't have a problem with that, because I'm a very fair person. But you're giving a lot of. You're giving a lot of authority to anybody who comes after me. Before me is long gone. I don't think you're stepping back up, but um however, we we've talked about a, if I was to. See evidence, or the board said, we see evidence of um misuse of the lake or ill use while on the lake of different boats and techniques or speed or something. They can bring it to us and and the first select person, whoever they are, writes a citation, we do have a citation review officer. In town. So they do have, the question was, well, what what course does the person who received the citation? Um, recourse to be able to challenge it, we do have a citation review. Uh, official in town, elected, you know, excuse me, appointed. Pointed official, we've had for some time, so, yes, Mr. Beck.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna point that out too, it is part of the codified town ordinances and that, and and the first selectman. Has the right to issue citations under other ordinances unrelated to the lake, you know, under the same concept, so. This is not something that's unique to uh uh Lake ordinances.
Okay, uh, I'm writing a note, I want you to get me a list of what I can write citations on. Okay, so that's fine, as long as there's a recourse, but I would certainly, you know, this is open to the the board. Um, okay, I'm just going through the questions and what we have, who determines what reckless or unsafe is? For selectmen, and the answer is uh reckless and unsafe standard generally is viewed as leaving some discretion with the enforcement authority. To determine based on the circumstances of each incident, looking for some. I don't know what that word is, declarations or case law guidance to assist with an understanding of these terms, we don't have an answer yet?
I I choose the, I got one at five o'clock, uh, from one of our attorneys at the office, and I can read uh. Uh, the the shortly after the line of helpful couple of sentences that I can get the memo to Mark tomorrow. Uh, recklessness is an imprecise standard which allows discretion on behalf of the reviewing authority to determine what conduct amounts to a violation. Generally recklessness means the creation of a substantial and unjustifiable risk of harm. And it requires conduct demonstrating a conduct disregard or indifference beside it. While Connecticut motor vehicle statutes do not define reckless driving, so uh there a law reckless is nonetheless. Instructive on this issue, notably, the Supreme Court of Connecticut has held that recklessness in the operation of a motor vehicle. Requires a conscious choice of action either with knowledge of the serious danger. To others involved or knowledge of facts which would disclose this danger to any reasonable person. So there has to be a a kind of a conscious disregard uh uh and 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 so forth, so it is a fairly. High standard, but it does give discretion uh in this instance would be to the first selectman. To determine whether a rise is to such a level that this in the public interest of the citation be issued.
Would you agree that any kind of ambiguity in the statute would be ensured against the town?
Uh, I don't, I wouldn't oppose ambiguity, no, I think it would be uh construed under uh by analogy to uh motor vehicle. Uh, claims and and uh so forth, and the person seeking to appeal it could go to. Uh, the hearing officer that was referenced, if the hearing officer upholds the first selectman, then the uh person also has the right to. Uh, appeal it to a court and, you know, heaven forbid, it goes all the way to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court would probably be looking to say. Was the first like, have, did the first election have a reasonable rationale for determining that this person. Showed a conscious disregard uh for the risk involved in his behavior or her behavior. Hopefully, we don't go there.
But you know what, where to go, you know what, on the side of the law and everything, that'd be nice, better. Okay, um. Yeah. There's some, there's some things with these ordinances, I see some things that we have to do with uh boat patrol and stuff. And give them things, guidelines or templates, so. Um, next question, do we have due process, the divided is a fair review, I think we've discussed that. Uh, really, Ms. Artie's asked about the drone, you know, for clarification. And prohibiting drone use. Trying to control the deep. Thank you for that for now. All right, so the state guidelines through the D E P have already stated, is that what I'm looking at here without having to decide all this?
Yes, Mary, right, well, first of all, you're gonna know, um. The uh, a a couple of thoughts on drone, first off, back in the nineteen nineties, they had these. So then we look, what we do have in the ordinance is, we've always prohibited radio or remote controlled types of watercraft. Uh, dealing them to be dangerous to the public health. And with that said, when we added drones, we found out that deep, and they had their webpage, and we think five hundred mark, we provided two to. The drones. The use of remote controlled model aircraft, war drones is prohibited at Connecticut State Park, Great Lakes, and other lands under control of deep. Unless specifically authorized by the commissioner and especially the swiftness. So we are suggesting to deep that because they manage the waters of all Connecticut, including Columbia Lake. Would they allow the prohibition of drones? Other than perhaps if you wanted commercially, such as a real estate. Uh, person, they do a lot of drones now, then you would have to be authorized by the commissioner with a special permit. Uh, but we clearly are seeing recreational more and more drones on annual bases that are well. Not only the safety issue of perhaps crash and run, but following boats, uh following people on docks. Uh, and it it has become.
Privacy, it's invasive, it's can be harassment.
It it's a public, it's a public health issue, if anything ever happened, but there are some privacy issues that C L A members have brought charge of.
How would you, you know, force it, how would you police it to get some people? When you're, when you just, it seems like, is it easy to know who's flying the drone?
Well, I can tell you that we literally on our dummy road had one of the three properties that was very um noisy and within. Probably thirty to forty feet uh above us, and we just followed it back. Literally to Lake Road where the person was using it and asked them if they wanted to use it on their personal property, that's fine. But on others' private property, we just guess it's a courtesy that they allow for our privacy. So whether you're in a boat or on land, you could tap into the law, and I think we would have to surprise the Marine Patrol. We happen to know this person who did it, and they were very unaware of A to D rule. And that there was a thought that they were invading our privacy. People have different implications of rights. I think deep would weigh in on this.
Yeah. And a problem with that's gonna keep saying, the more we get them involved, the more they're involved.
Would you prefer that the town just said, add it to remote controlled radio, you know, we have it, so maybe we. Suggest with.
Well, I I'm one person here, I think I would, but I would also, like you said, for commercial use. Like real estate, they are a huge selling point, especially for lake property, beach property, mountain property, you know, any real, you know, property. Uh, but I would say they would have to get approval from. If you do first select.
It might be illegal, and we'd have to.
Right, interesting, yes.
Michael Mazzola, left now, Matt Humbert. Um. In order for a drone operator to operate commercially.
Yeah, definitely.
They need to have a drone license. Uh, which I'm actually out, and so in order to go through and and operate in a certain area. The um, they have to get a permit if there's any restrictions in around a certain area.
So give them the permit.
Uh, the F A A. There's a whole site on the F A A where you can go in and. And ironically, I've never looked over Columbia Lake, but there's a whole, you can go in and, you know, plug in an address and see if there's any restrictions, mostly it's related to airspace. And and air uh aircraft, um, but uh either way, um, you know, a drone operator should know. But a commercial, excuse me, commercial drone operator in commercial operation should know where they can operate commercially.
Yeah.
Uh, this could be amended as being discussed to uh simply say that. Drone use is prohibited without proper uh authorization and leave it at that, and it's likely. Uh, we're guessing, obviously, but since the D P R A feels, or the D E P R A feels its way about State Part. They would uh say this is a system of state policy and this move past it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, in that way, if it changes. Our, my office will have the update change to uh either continue to say no or yes for circumstances as the changes come about, so.
All right, but I I think the intent is really. Operation over the lake, like over people, you know, any commercial operator that will say doing a a house, you know, they may. Come offshore a little bit and just get a view of the house, they're not gonna be, I think, intent. Uh, uh, this was buzzing over other people's houses and over the lake and involving people, so that was the intent.
I I get it, but intent. You know, and all of a sudden, the intent starts to weigh further into the water.
Clearly, what we don't need is the spotter of the skier operating a drone, saying, I think they're supposed to be watching for the safety of the skier.
Correct. I I think we'll have to look at the wording on that, approval has to come from the. Uh, for selectmen.
The system of state.
Yeah.
Current state policy.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
I want to sort of back to the grandfather clause. My concern with that is. Like. I I completely disagree with you, I have a thirty six foot houseboat that's, I have a hit western look. And um, it was not used as a permanent or temporary residence. Um, so therefore, I was not technically in violation from the previous statute. As far as your grandfather clauses, if I had an priority in every second, why wouldn't my uh thirty six foot houseboat still be legal next summer?
It would be uh legal as a thirty six foot boat, but it wouldn't be legal as a houseboat because our present ordinance. Uh, prohibits uh houseboats, but if it was deemed to have been met. The uh. Uh, as it was, the ordinance is in place, it would be grandfathered so long as they use and say, stay consistent with that. If suddenly it starts to be used as a houseboat uh with plumbing and people staying overnight and stuff like that, then it is. It's exceeded the protection of the grandfather clause law, to ride it around the lake. Uh, use the legal motor and enjoy it as a thirty six foot boat anchor somewhere, all of that would be fine, it would just be. Try to expand that things.
So if we went back and refitted it to be able to take temporary or, you know, be used as a houseboat, it would then violate the current ordinances, as I say, it can't do that. It would have to be removed from the lake or stripped back to. But I gotta be honest with you, if it came to me and they turned it back to a houseboat. Yeah, we'll we'll cross that bridge, they won't do it, we'll cross that bridge in a attempt, but. I wouldn't authorize a stripping of it, it probably up the lake, get an offer there, and nobody could spend that money anyway, so. You know what I mean?
I'm just concerned about the, you already told. You're telling me that the houseboat remained in the lake, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that vote, well, I believe that the determination was made that that vote was not. A violation of the statute because it was not a houseboat. It's large, it remains not a houseboat, then it would be grandfathered, to the extent that it clearly becomes a houseboat. Under the new ordinance, it would be illegal. Because it's it's changed, there's a change of views.
I I think I know what we're going out there, and I think that the. What's given here is, if you were to say my thirty six foot boat that I put on the lake last time.
It's currently not in violation of the statute.
Good to go.
Then, then it's good to go, okay. And yeah, but when you use the word houseboat. That.
It's no longer a houseboat, it is a large boat.
I read.
Yeah.
And if somebody else has a uh a twenty six or a twenty seven foot platoon boat that we don't know about. And it's not with on the lake this year, and it was passed by Marines and fall, then it's grandfathered too.
As long as you don't put plumbing in it and you don't sleep on it.
Correct.
Chris has a question.
So is the date November second, moving date now? And will be the day on around the time when this, if it does go through the different approval, we'll give it before the town, the date will be sometime. Near some boats, and how many people have an original notice?
So. I'll run it by them, but my guess is November second, they should have had all boats and everything off the lake.
So be because of.
Because the drawdown, so the bottom line is, the line has been snapped in the sand, if it was on before that, it's it's grandfathered, if it continues to meet. The standard that it was on the lake. But. They're not gonna be able to, why would anybody go out and buy a houseboat to put on the lake, because that boat, which was not a houseboat. Why would somebody get one in December to think they're gonna put it on the lake, that's why we're doing this? So basically, snap the line.
I was just thinking hypothetically, if someone got a deal on a twenty seven foot. Powerboat. On November fifth. And I, and they're keeping it at their sister's house, and then they're gonna bring it in, thinking that they're gonna, you know, launch it in April, they're gonna be like, ah shit.
Wasn't authorized this year.
Yes, Mr. Beck.
We'll read the the people. That have, you know, longer on the lake, before they put it back on the lake, they're also uh legally charged with responsibility for knowing the discussions that are taking place here and knowing that there might be a change. And so it's hard for them to then turn around and say, uh, you took my property because uh uh I had no knowledge you were gonna. Outlaw twenty six, boats over twenty six feet, they 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 look at the town records, if they come down and talk to the town administrator, they're gonna find that. This sound a good idea, and they'll figure out where these ordinances might go. Uh, so the need to grandfather them is uh less apparent and less. Uh, a concern and a part of law than someone who had both their for November second. And legally facing. And they can face.
We need to make some changes. Based on what we've heard, the discussion tonight, and the big one is, um, Roland.
Right.
Referencing, um. From what we've, the answers that we've received, any any ideas, any problems, any?
You know, I'm concerned about the recklessness, we, and then, you know, going back to this. Um, I understand what the standard is for recklessness, but for example, for reckless riding with a motor vehicle, usually it's twenty miles per hour on the skin. So it's, it's, I, I'm quite in line that you can say that they're acting recklessly by, by, by people at discretion to say whether reckless or not. If you're honestly, if you're frustrating the individual, you know, you may wanna divert to, or default to, uh, same and recklessness.
I would say again, it comes down to, uh, discretion. The, the goal here is, uh, you go beyond the citation and say, you've got to stop you. If somebody consistently is out there, uh, uh, without a spotter, uh, if somebody is consistently out there, uh, with a beer can in their hand, even though we're not pulling them over for, uh, and giving them a breathalyzer test. Uh, if somebody is consistently running at high speed at ten o'clock at night after a start, there are situations where you, you can see that, um, it would be difficult for that person to appeal and succeed. And that's kind of what this is designed to do. It's not designed to, uh, to try to be used regularly, uh, to punish people, uh, that know, it'll too mu- too much at one time or another. It's not, it's not even thought that it has to be a third strike. It could be the fourth, fifth, or this sixth strike. Or it could be the first one if it's inherently, uh, uh, risky because they ended up, uh, hitting another boat in the process or something like that.
Especially if we could put examples in the ordinance.
I, I think you got an example, but, but not, you know, my concern is that it, it's back to the issue that I raised earlier is whether it's gonna be in store against a town in San Diego's. And when, you know, you're gonna crop the radiation from this.
Why don't we do a little more work on that? Uh, I'll, I'll try to find whether in Columbia or other towns, whether there, there, there's some interference with, uh, uh, kind of type, so these types of, uh, cases.
Well, I haven't seen it at all, you know, this is really getting down to the nature and maybe that, that's a compliment that I think you guys are spending the time, you know, I've been hearing this, but I just don't want something to bounce back on a sort of, uh, you know, fast, kind of, we started, everyone, right? You know, leading, so to be, you know.
Understood, understood, and that's why the discretion here is, uh, and, and use of it, I don't see it being used willy-nilly, and, and I mean, we put it in there rather than, um, say on the third offense, you're off the lake. Because, uh, that could be three strikes or out. Specific and understood, but it could be something that's so egregious the first time that we might have it, uh, uh, stopped. Or, I mean, it could be that even at the third time, that's premature because it wasn't, you know, really, uh, that bad. And so I would say if you took it out, I would suggest going to a finite standard like saying, uh, the, at the discretion, uh, of the first selection, uh, for reasons of public safety, uh, after the third offense or fourth offense or whatever, so that this kind of doubles up on the standard and you get the comfort of knowing that it's not gonna be used the first time and the person's gonna have fair warning if they've already gotten that number of violation, uh, of citations for the same violation, the, the next one means they're gone.
I'm just concerned, Steve's very, very reasonable, but what if we go for some, some tyrant in the position?
Hello, Bushel.
Or a citation officer could be very busy.
I think the other thing. It comes down to our training. It comes down to, um, the wording and the warnings. It comes, it really comes down to training and the wording that we use, not so much reckless, but unsafe. Because that's what we want on the lake. We want everybody to enjoy it in a safe manner. Now, some stuff is like somebody hopping the waves on a wave runner behind a boat. Coming off the lake. It's not allowed. It's unsafe. That's easy. But you give somebody a citation, they could fight it too, which is, that's fine. However, we'll have to do more training, look at our training programs, so we take some of that, you know, ambiguous type away a little bit, but it's never gonna be a hundred percent, never. And when somebody has to judge the actions of somebody else, he'll never be, you know, perfect. But it'll, it can be good.
Yeah, and, and I think, uh, there are a lot of this, or some of this is coming from this past summer, there's been a lot of belligerent, um, actions by people on the lakes toward Lake Patrol. With, I mean, with complete disregard of, of their safety or, or the expect or their position on, trying to just make them safe and fun, um, you know. Clearly evading them, going back to their properties, turning around, you know, swearing at them, you can't touch me, there's nothing you can do. So we're trying to give Lake Patrol a bit more of a, of a fight for, you know, to help with that kind of behavior.
In conjunction with state laws in our personal.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we just move?
It's a dangerous for me, for the Lake Patrol.
I would say it's dangerous. Uh, I mean, I haven't heard anything that's been dangerous. It's just been, you know, very disres- disrespectful and, and belligerent. Overly belligerent act, uh, uh, action by, by people on this.
It's not supposed to be dangerous for, uh, officials for high school sports either, but I, I, when people get aggressive and belligerent and stuff, I, you know. I've seen it, yeah.
I couldn't say it's dangerous, but it has led to the Marine Patrol being comfortable having two people in the boat rather than, uh, one. And I would say if you went back and looked at the LMAC minutes as, as we went over all of this, there was one iteration of these kinds of concepts where we anticipated, uh, and actually have, have written in. The first time, uh, anybody does anything wrong, it's just a warning. The second time this happens, the third time this happens. And we determined that that was a little too regulated and required too much bookkeeping. And that, like, we should treat our Marine Patrol like, uh, regular, uh, first responder policemen with some discretion so that uh, they could give somebody a warning, uh, and anticipate that there's gonna be a warning and only on the second or third time, uh, give somebody a citation.
Yeah. Okay. You good?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I, I'm just concerned about the safety here as well. And, and going back many years ago when I was in college, I had a summer job with the DEP. By the time they were, um, training seasonal park patrol and they call them, they don't have them anymore because they were getting put in danger situation. Where, where you have people, you know, uh, consuming alcohol, you approach them, you generally, and, and you're not training as a law enforcement officer, technically, they give you some weak training on it. And, and your records being drawn on them and, and denying us and different things in our very danger, so. We obviously, I don't want to split it out in a Columbia lake, but I'm concerned about whether we have properly trained people to deal with law enforcement issues out there and whether we're, we're kind of putting people in danger.
We're fine. Yeah. Immaturity of the people who choose.
Yeah, and.
The people on the way to call. Or the way people are called.
Yeah, both. So we have another, more work to do.
Right, we'll bring it back on the.
So, uh, I appreciate y'all being here. It's obvious we have a little bit more tweaking to do, a little bit more fine. Uh, you know, language and stuff like that, but, uh, I, I think we're all. Our mission in doing this. I don't think there's any real end to do with it. The bottom line is, save funds, good for everybody who wants to use the lake. Out of respect for people on the lakes and out of respect for the lake. Henry.
Uh, Steve, thank you. The only thing that I would point out is that to get these ready for next year, there's a time sequence, uh, Bob Howell has well worked out, Mark Tronhop and so forth. It would be helpful if at this point, while, uh, uh, and I assume you're gonna refer it back to LMAC to tweak those things or, or, or legal content to tweak those things. If we could start, authorize someone, either Mark or, or LMAC to start the informal review with DEP over the changes of the region. Have their input before you decide whether you're gonna have a town meeting or how you're gonna deal with it.
Okay, so here's, here's, uh, here's what I would put out there. That you take this back cause you said it out of your words, we'll, we'll redo, uh, we'll take, look at some of the wording stuff and paraphrase that. Get it to Mark. I'm here all the time. I'll look at it and, uh, we can shoot it out to the board. Get a twenty-four hour turnaround, take a look at, there's not a lot of things that we have to change. And then we will, um, get it back to you to get DEP involved right away. As, as, so we can get this stuff rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome.
Steven, while you're, wait a second. This was based, last time I had a, I mean, we need to grant my, I believe, forty-five percent from the state or to death. So that's what this number, which leaves us at fifty-five. We're really gonna be at forty-seven, forty-six. But we didn't want to have it's exact numbers in case somehow the grant money changed. Okay. And you can't change those numbers because they're already, that legal notice already.
Okay, next is, uh, six point two approval explanatory text to the townwide informational mail regarding HVAC fourth quarter school project. So. In front of you here. This card.
The, the actual explanatory text is still being worked on. This was just a a, um, postcard, so people would know that we're having a town meeting on November thirtieth. To get it in their hands before November thirtieth, I had to do it today. So I did it with bond counsel and, um, with the superintendent. Bev, myself, Jen, and then, and we looked at it this morning too. So that's how we got this. So this is just the bare basics. Explimentary text, I'll have more.
Thank you. So, uh, is there anything else we have to do under old business, Mike?
Your legal notice.
Illegal notice. Which is under old business right behind LMAC.
Well, that's why I have to read in entirety.
Yes.
Okay, legal notice, Town of Columbia, notice of a special town meeting and referendum. All qualified electors of the Town of Columbia, Connecticut, the town, and any other persons entitled to vote upon any of the matters contained in this notice are hereby warned that a special town meeting of the town is to be held at Yeoman's Hall, three twenty-three Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut, on Thursday, November thirtieth in the year twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM for the following purposes. One, to elect the moderator. Two, to consider and discuss but not vote on the following resolution. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of six million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the installation, replacement, and/or upgrading of the HVAC system and indoor air quality improvements at the Forest W Quarter School and the financing of said appropriation by issuance of a general obligation bond. And notes and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, uh, nine, three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The full text of the foregoing authorization resolution is on file and open to inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, three twenty-three Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut, for the use or inspection of any interested person. Can I be buying any of this person? All qualified electors and persons entitled to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to section two point five alpha of the Town Charter, the foregoing resolution is being submitted to the voters at referendum for a yes or no vote. The question to be voted upon is as follows. One, shall the resolution entitled, resolution authorizing an appropriation of six million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the insulation, replacement and/or upgrade of the HVAC system and indoor air quality improvements at Forest W Quarter School and the financing of said appropriation by issuance of general obligation bonds? And notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars be approved? Yes or no? The ballot label for said question shall read as follows. Shall the town appropriate six million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for HVAC system and indoor air quality improvements at Forest W Quarter School and authorize issuance of general obligation bonds and notes up to three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to finance said appropriation? Yes, no? The vote will be conducted Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three during the hours from twelve PM to eight PM at Yeoman's Hall, three twenty-three Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office in accordance with applicable law. Absentee ballots will be counted at the following central location. Yeoman's Hall, three twenty-three Route eighty-seven, Columbia, Connecticut. Voters approving the resolution will vote yes and voters opposing the resolution will vote no. Three, to adjourn the special time reading to a referendum vote on the above questions to be held on the date and during the time and the notice calling place referred to the above. So that's our dated at Columbia, Connecticut, this, the twenty-first day of November, twenty twenty-three. Um, do we have a discussion or just this is it?
Yeah, I have a discussion, it's just a, a point killer on this. Why do we got to compel the first election, so you want to read this in its entirety? You know, right here, we just all read it and say, as presented here, that we move it as the board. It doesn't make sense to me to make it go through this each time where you're basically just a monologue, let's say here into the minutes anymore.
I'd be happy to do it that way, but we were told it had to be read. So.
And that may be because this is a public meetings, they were recorded, they're they are not hearing it and they don't have a copy of it if it's not read.
But it's, 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 there's a red cover, this is, it cares of, if I'm a not a member of, was my, my interest, and it's like access this.
I'll seek another opinion. It is, it is painful to read a multi-page document, you know.
You know, but I, I, I had a question and you saying that. My question is, Henry said, if somebody goes out and buys a boat, put on November fifth. Shame on them because they had the opportunity to hear the changes and know of it on a meeting that was held. You know what I mean? So it I understand what you're saying. He's saying they should be here at all the meetings and you're saying they don't have to see it. Cause, or they don't have to hear it or see it because they could see it at a later date. I don't know what the answer is, but I hear these things and I'm going, you know, we're, we're asking two things of the people. But it's a pain in the neck, but I don't mind.
It's cause you couldn't leave your legal hat at home. You had to bring it to this meeting.
Actually, I've been watching, uh, suits on Netflix. It's an attorney's, uh, drama or something like that. I've heard it so much, Bill.
Is this, I have to give to the town.
I put twenty-first on there. That's what.
You um you left a duplicate. You're not going to leave that until tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So what are you telling me?
Yeah, because then that's going to get.
It'll make Bill upset about that.
Never will.
It could.
Right.
Misspelled his name.
Oh, they did.
In the legal notice? Yeah, we can fix it. Yeah.
Everybody resign.
We can fix it and print it out again. Cause that signature page is not in the legal notice. So we'll we'll fix it for the official record. It'll be with the town clerk. Now just wait, we'll print it on.
Hey. New business, no Columbia, no appointment to resignation. Okay, what do you, what are you telling me here? Is there a problem? Are you just adding two people?
You're reaffirming.
Review and discussion on members term expiring, well, eleven twenty-seven point eight, okay. So uh John Allen, Ron Wickham are, are your term is up?
Correct, being reappointed.
What about Mr. Archibald? Could he go on? Okay. All right, I move to appoint John Allen and Ron Wickham to the inland wetlands and water courses commission. And John Dilworth as an author to inland, wetlands and water court commission. This is just reappointing seats that are already whole. Any discussion? All those in favor? I moved to appoint Nick and Kelly and Heather. Pecker Robic to the recreation department. Are they on there and they need to be updated or is it something else?
Uh no, they're, they're, they're existing in there.
Reap. What happened with uh Steve Piero? You didn't hear from him? Okay.
Okay, um any discussion? All those in favor? So if Steve Piero gets back to you, will he go in next month or in two weeks or something?
December fifth.
Yeah, December fifth.
Some fifty.
Nothing in the town administrator's board?
Yes, sir.
You've got nothing?
No, I have an announcement that. Uh unfortunately, you had to accept the retirement wishes of our assistant town clerk. Gail McGrath. So she and her husband decided to. To.
It's a happy thing for them.
Yeah, take. It's another retirement for Gail, but um Tom has already retired and they have a lot of plans and they had uh wanted to start them. So February second will be her last date. And we're going to have a pizza party. Um at eleven o'clock that Friday before she leaves. You're welcome. Right, she's very um very good at what she did and um. It's gonna be a challenge, so we'll, we'll have to look for a replacement. Uh Gail actually started November eleventh, two thousand and eleven, so she's had twelve years with the town. Which is a good run. And then um. I just wanted to give you just a heads up, there's a lot going on with CROG. Um we've been having a lot of me- meetings just defining what the strategic playbook is going to be for CROG. And how they can help our towns, both small and large. Um there's actually a lot going on with um. What we've been looking at, which is um housing toolkits, housing strategies. Um how to access HUD financing assistance, so a lot, huge focus statewide on trying to create housing. And um I was just talking to John Essex made quite a few u- units down by the Essex. Steam train, all with a giant septic system and they're real tasteful, really nice. Old Seabrook's doing the same thing. Chester just put in multi-units. So it is something that. Planning zoning is trying to modify our regs so we can actually create some more dense housing. And then um. They're also trying to help us in our um purchasing. Uh we do use CROG. Or some of our purchasing uh commodities and they're helping us to really look at uh waste management. It's going to be a huge problem. We just met with Casella and we're looking at uh possibly up to eight, ten percent increase. In the cost of waste.
You know, I go through um. Maybe with Marlboro. And they have all waste cans.
Right.
Can we contact all?
Well, we are, we are going out fit, so we have a.
There are.
Not many because it's location driven, um but we are. Beth is looking and we notified Casella that we are going to be seeking competitive bits.
No, it's just like uh. Like the cable industry.
Well, broadband, that's another one. You know, right now, at where I live, I can only use Comcast. Uh I I can't, I'm waiting for fiber optic, but it seems that they haven't turned it on yet. And it's, it's not here yet either. So broadband is a big um, big challenge that CROG is trying to help us with too. And also um. Beverly and I have been very involved with Novus Insight, our I T. Um company, because part of our I T insurance for fraud requires us to do quite a bit of uh having strategic. Fail safes and protocols. Uh they just did inventory of every software that is in our system. Um to make sure there aren't access portals to get viruses into us that we're not aware of. Uh so there, it's it's a big, big project and uh we're, we're glad to be working on it. Just trying to keep us safe. So that's, that's all I have from the uh and uh I just want to thank Beth, she's been um. Putting in a lot of hours with the audit and we're training uh both of our payroll clerk and Tara's been a huge help. On her council payable side, she's actually helping the assessor get the whole grant list ready and she's helping the um. Um our office, so. We need her back. We keep sharing her too much. So uh, thank you, Beth. That's all I have now.
Uh Cora Barnes, there's an A H M program reporting there. Yeah, quick time to read that. They do, they do a lot of the work with.
Very involved.
And light up what's in the paper these days all over the place. Um I think what they do in the towns and schools is very important as we move forward. Uh budget, no transfers. I move to approve refund totaling nine hundred and five hundred dollars and eighty cents. All those in favor? I move to pay in a bill totaling forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
I signed it.
Uh consisting of four regular credit card paycheck. Forty-three thousand. Nothing on the uh, she says Lake Meyer can hear, there's nothing on the fish, huh?
No, I definitely got no report. No, um the bill that you've seen. Our consultants.
Any questions, especially? I'm most favorite paying bill. That's much better.
Let's do a monitor.
Uh, audience. Audience, a citizen online, anybody online?
Um Beverly's still there.
And then uh so seeing none, board member comments, anybody? Okay, uh so at this time, I want to pause the regular. Board of Selectment meeting and I move to enter into executive session at eight oh one. And invite Mark Walter, town administrator, to stay. So uh we're going to come out of executive session of uh eight. Eight eighteen. And uh at this point, I would move to adjourn the regular board of selecting meeting, all those in favor.
And we took no action.